There is one.
And so we have one, we can start with our premier. For three.
Do we just want to begin?
That Charlie's in charge.
Charlie's in charge. Go for it.
We've got to sing the song though.
Mid meeting, it's going to come.
I heard it, I heard, heard something over there. So usually how we start these meetings, do we have anything, any orders of business or anything, or do we just? Doesn't look like we do. So usually we just go through the agenda one at a time. So if you guys want us to start, we, we can.
Please begin.
So Tammy, do you have the first item? Do you have all the items? Is this the Tammy show?
So exciting. The first item is a conditional use permit for Powder Mountain installing a new sewer lift station. These were, now these were on consent. I know there was discussion in the chair and vice chair meeting about pulling these from consent.
We did.
That still remains your prerogative during the meeting today, but.
Okay. During the meetings, I thought we were just going to go ahead and move them under administrative.
So we, we have to have a certain amount of time before, prior to the meeting in order to.
Change the agenda.
Change the agenda.
Okay.
Which we didn't have that amount of time, but it, but it can be done in the meeting.
Yeah, you can go in, you can go in right before minutes and have asked someone to move to amend the agenda.
For four minutes.
Yeah, just at the very beginning.
Okay.
Pulling consent items to, out of consent and into administrative items.
Okay. Okay.
You guys have any questions regarding this sewer lift station?
I think we did, and I'm going to keep writing, but I believe there are some. Okay, I know that we had some questions. We were asking for you to find out some information about why we were abandoning the Sheep Creek. Line. That this is needed because they're no longer going to pursue the Sheep Creek line that was already there, and now they're going to do something else.
They're upgrading.
They're upgrading.
They're upgrading their infrastructure, they're upgrading and expanding their infrastructure. And they're using ARPA funds to do it. I believe that was another question, was the funding of this project?
I think that's right. Yeah, yeah. So they're upgrading and expanding.
For my benefit, can you tell me what ARPA funds are?
American Rescue Plan Act, federal funds allocated to different municipalities for various projects that benefit.
All the projects.
It was designated to certain types of things, as one of them being infrastructure and utilities. So waterworks.
And that was the county commissioners that had that assigned, right?
Yeah, their government gave it to the counties jurisdictions and the jurisdictions to do with it, what they deemed fit.
People had to apply for it, yeah. Okay, so upgrading and expanding, is the sheep. My own information, is the Sheep Creek Station still viable? And they just wanted something that can provide more?
So they're actually installing a new lift station within the Sheep Creek Common Area. They're abandoning a portion of the main line.
Okay.
But they're installing a new lift station. I'm not aware that they're decommissioning or discontinuing use of any lift stations.
Okay. Okay, and then it may just be the wording, but it caught my eye in the beginning of page two of eight. Under the very top line of the general plan, you make a mention that. With the establishment of an appropriate, of appropriate conditions as determined by the planning commission. The operation will not negatively impact any of the goals and policies of the general plan. So what specific conditions would be needed for it to not negatively impact? Like that just line kind of stuck out to me.
Right. I think typically you'd first identify anything you feel would possibly be a negative impact. Maybe it would be an unsightly structure. We actually look at architectural standards under the conditional use standards, and so that's been addressed in the staff report. I'm not sure what else would there be Charlie.
Yeah, I'm about to pull the.
Health and safety, you feel that health, safety and welfare may be compromised in some way.
So just, there are five general overarching principles. They all break down into smaller. Standards as well, but the five general overarching standards are standards relating to safety for persons and property. Standards relating to infrastructure amenities and services. Standards relating to the environment, standards relating to the current qualities and characteristics of the surrounding area and compliance with the intent of the general plan. Standards relating to performance and to general standards which. That's kind of your umbrella, that's your catchall for things that aren't otherwise listed.
And those are listed further down on page two.
Okay. Anybody else? Have anything I'll clarify?
Is there a? Diagram of what this scale looks like? In the packet?
Yes, on the last page, on page eight.
Commissioner Barber, are you able to hear us?
Well, yes, I, I believe I can hear you.
Do you have any questions about this item on the agenda?
No, the questions I've had were answered.
Okay. Anything else before we? Get done?
Well, the only, the only, I guess it's an add-on question, the ARPA funds. Those are. The amount of dollars allocated to each project is a public, piece of public information, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, all our funds are supposed to be transparent.
Or, or one says yes.
Yes, that should be a matter of public.
But we're not showing it in any of our documents here.
It's not considered as part of the conditional use application.
Yeah, one of the primary things we do here, Commissioner Barber, is we look at compliance with the land use code. And where ARPA dollars and funding mechanisms aren't part of the land use code, that it's really not within our purview.
But if somebody wanted to know, they could find out.
Yeah, yep.
Anybody else? Okay, everything comes up afterwards, we can come back. Well, for the sake of time, go on to the next item. Any questions about? Two point two. This is the one that's over by North Fork. If I remember correctly. And this is also ARPA funds, this is Liberty.
Yes, they're installing a booster pump station and some water monitoring equipment.
Yeah. Anybody have anything regarding this one? So while people consider. During our pre-meeting, it was thought, if I'm, and you can correct if I'm wrong, Commissioner Barber, but we, I believe it was suggested that, hey, since it was. ARPA fund related, public funds were being used, we thought that we should allow it to be under administrative for discussion and, you know. Have it explained to the public, if I'm remembering correctly, that was one of our reasons we were going to move it to administrative. CUP approval rather than just simply a blanket up and down vote. Again, during these things, we still can't, as if, well, we can have, the public can talk, but they, you know, it doesn't come into play. But by moving it to administrative, it allows it to be discussed between us and with the staff. In the public purview. If nobody has any issue or, you know, points they would like to flesh out, do we still feel it needs to be moved? That's a question for my mission.
I guess there's no discussion.
If nobody has any points they want to discuss, then there'd be no reason to move it.
That is fine, we just move on.
Yeah, because without it being moved under administrative, we would just basically take it up and down vote, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you just. Request a motion on consent and then someone will move and then you just up or down and that automatically approves both items on the consent if you don't pull it off.
Yes. Commissioner Barber, do you, I know that you had mentioned, was it, I think it was because it was using public funding and everything that it was, we thought. Appropriate for the public to hear it at least. Presented. Do you still feel that way, or do you think? If there's no discussion we had on it, do you think we should just keep it where it is in the agenda?
I, I think that's the point. If, if there is no one there interested in discussing the matter, then. And we're not disclosing any specific information about the ARPA funds other than they are being used. Then maybe not moving it is probably reasonable, but if, if it seems like there are people. Who want to hear or discuss, then why not let them?
You talked about from the audience.
Correct.
Okay. It sounds like I moved to make it moved in the agenda before we even get to the minute, so. Would I then just move it to put it there and then ask if anybody wanted to speak to it? Is that how that would go?
Good.
If you wanted to, you could just do an informal raise of hand survey from the audience to ask if anybody is interested. You don't have to do this, but you could do that and see if anybody's interested in hearing more of a presentation on these items, and if so, you could. Then see if anybody wants to make a motion.
Okay, so after the pledge of allegiance, before we start the meeting, just say, is anyone in the audience?
Yeah, really, and you can do it after the minutes, at the beginning of the consent item portion, if you wanted to, either before or after the minutes.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I just, a really quick Google of Weber County ARPA funds, the very first document that shows up is a document that was, looks like it's dated. July, June 30th, 2024, and it has a very detailed list of all of the projects that ARPA is funding throughout the county.
Yep.
What's that website?
Quick question. It's on.
You search for this stuff all the time.
So I'm looking at staff recommendation on this one and the last one, based on findings that. Mitigation of potential detrimental effects can be accomplished. Don't you need to identify what they are?
I'm sorry, you're sorry, I, I missed some of that. You said the staff findings on that one and the last one.
Yeah.
Staff recommend everything.
Criteria for issuance of a conditional use permit is met because mitigation of potential detrimental effects can be accomplished. Well, what are the detrimental effects?
That was my first question, when I was asking, what were the things that would make it not detrimental?
Yeah, because they ought to be listed.
So that was my first question.
We, we have the categories listed in the staff report under conditional use review.
Does it say that there are no detrimental effects?
It states that we have no, we can't identify any detrimental effects. Now, the planning commission may identify some. And you're welcome to list those, and we can certainly add those to conditions of approval. Okay. If you feel there are some that need to be mitigated.
There are probably plenty of detrimental effects, but with the engineering provided to us and with the proposal provided to us and the application. It, it sounds like they're probably mitigating the detrimental effects that could occur and with some of these conditional use permits. But if you guys are aware of any detrimental effects that are above and beyond or not considered, or something that may need to be discussed, let's certainly discuss it.
Just seems to me there's a disconnect here. There either are, and this is how they're mitigating, or there are none, so we don't need to mitigate it.
Most of here says the proposal is not anticipated or expected to never impact this property's kind of purpose of issues for the first one, a minute. So list the, the ones and then it talks about how they're not.
Okay, so the finding out of what you.
Page two.
Yeah, two out of nine.
It says, well, that's basically what they're saying.
Or designer.
That's why it's under consent, right? So the standards related to safety for persons and property. The proposal is not anticipated or expected to negatively impact this property, surrounding properties or persons, which is probably fair considering it's a new building.
So if nothing comes up in our meeting that would indicate there are dead potential detrimental effects that need to be mitigated. Then the finding out of B, there are no detrimental effects that can be identified.
Yeah, or any detrimental effects anticipated have been recently mitigated with the proposal.
We can say that.
Whichever one you, you choose, we've got, so we do have the five different, I think you, you came in just after we read through them, so we've got the five different standards. Each of them have different points under them, but number one is standards relating to safety for persons and property. If you feel like there's a security challenge or a security issue with this, we could always talk about fencing if, if they haven't already addressed fencing in there. But if they have, for example, addressed fencing, that could be a, a finding of, of. Elimination of a dead potential detrimental effect. Standards relating to infrastructure amenities and services, standards related to the environment. I mean, for example, sewage is always not great for the environment when it's leaking out onto, into the groundwater. But with all the standards that they put into it, and the engineering they put into it, we can probably. Make a statement that they've limited or eliminated the potential environmental detrimental effects. Compliance with the intent of the general plan. Did you say there were five safety indicators? I only see four listed, what's the difference?
Safety and amenities, environment.
Standards related to performance. And oh yeah, and the sixth one is standards generally. So that's kind of the catch-all, the umbrella of, we didn't, we didn't think about this one. And so generally.
I don't see six.
Oh. Now, maybe it's not in the staff report. Not on the report, it's subject four.
I guess one fact that I have, which we, I think this comes up every time, so I think I know the answer. Doesn't there ordinance that these can't be CMU blocks?
We do have an ordinance that says no CMU in our designs.
Those like textured CMU.
Yeah, so, and it's not even the textured, it's rolled and tumbled, we do roll and tumble to give the appearance of stone. But even the split ACME was in the last time it was announced, and is that what this is?
They're proposing a split base textured CMU.
Which we're saying is not.
So we'll probably need to make a condition related to the material. You could do masonry, you could do stone, you could do rolled and tumbled, I mean, the rolling and tumbling of the CMUs usually affects the structural integrity. And so you can only use, generally use that as a lick and stick facade. But that's not necessarily a bad thing.
But this does come up every time we do a lift station.
So just to be clear. I don't care particularly what it is made of, as long as it beats the code, but what you're telling me is that, from what I'm seeing here, this doesn't. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so code compliance would, essentially what the code says is it needs to give the appearance of real stone.
We will need to make sure we specify that it needs to be.
Yeah.
Because that is not.
But this is split face CMU of this.
And where?
So why isn't noted here? Why isn't the?
Why isn't? I don't know your name yet. Trevor Sheen. It'll take seven times and then I'll get it.
I'll give you eight, and that's it.
I like to call him former chair.
Yeah.
Rub it in.
When, when two commissioners have said this comes up every time, this coming comes up every time, why isn't that a guess before it comes to this meeting?
I'm not entirely certain on this one, do you know?
It can be, and we just don't, like it, like it's hard to see, like what this is submitted is what the applicant puts. And it could have been revisited and saying, hey, like, this, this can't be these items, and so it's hard to know exactly. And maybe that just didn't get put in here, so that's, that's what we're supposed to do, is catch that kind of thing, I guess.
That's really, that's really why all of these come to the planning commission in general. But also sometimes they can give us like last minute changes that we don't always see all the fine print on. And so it's nice to get seven eyes on, just to have everyone take a look and make sure everyone's comfortable with it, with this compliance, so.
It was new, if I remember right.
What was the CMU thing? Yeah, two or three years old, I think it's the result of, in part the result of the storage units.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's been more than that, it's been four, almost four years.
I'm going to cut this short here, because we can reply with this conversation effort, we've got five minutes and the next two items on the agenda, even though this one says three, and I'm pretty sure we took one of them off. Right? So the next one, three and three point four and three point five. However, we vote on three point four, we'll decide whether or not we even address three point five, so I want to make sure that if anyone has any questions or any needs fleshed out for them. Free. We start thinking about that now, we've got five more minutes.
You want me to introduce these?
It's just to kind of, okay.
One is to take that not consent, we got right.
I thought I was supposed to ask the audience, but I'm happy to do that, I can do it either way.
Which those changes will need.
Okay, perfect. Now I'll just, I won't ask the audience, I'll just take them out.
Well, and then take much, we'll just, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, for me, speaking of yourself, I don't have a problem with it as long as it meets the standards.
Yeah, no, that's.
Sounds like that's something that just needs to be clarified here, which it says that it needs to.
Can we pass that with a clarification?
Yeah, all it is, is, all we're just reiterating, it says in here, it has to meet it anyway.
Sure.
We're just reiterating, hey, this, this, by the way, this can't be a CMU, yeah, as we made it.
That makes it easy.
However, they want to build it to.
Yeah. To catch it to mine.
Okay, so I'll do that. Yes.
Okay, very quickly, Powder Mountain is submitting a subdivision for preliminary approval this evening. The layout of their subdivision requires that they request an amendment to a couple of their concept area plans. So just kind of a little bit of background, they have a zoning development agreement that was recorded back in 2013. In 2022, a second amendment, we've got a first one recorded as well. But specific to this, a second amendment was reported to their development agreement that allowed for the land use authority. To approve, to first determine if proposed changes were slight and inconsequential. And then to be able to approve those without having to amend the zoning development agreement, which is a legislative process. So the second amendment allowed for these changes to be seen as administrative and approved as such. There's language in that, that, that these concept plans typically be submitted with something like a subdivision application. These are listed in a very particular order, so if you determine, if you approve the concept development area changes. Then we can move forward with the subdivision, and the subdivision recommendation for approval is conditioned upon the concept area plans. Being approved by you this evening.
And it talks about slight and inconsequential.
Yes, and it does define those as roadway layouts, product types, multifamily, single family, that kind of thing. It does define what those slight and inconsequential changes would be.
Just like details on a general plan.
Yeah, just keep in mind that the zoning development agreement lays them out in a very conceptual manner, manner. And so as, as the developer is going through and actually putting feet on the ground and looking to develop these. And getting their engineered plans together, topography, of course, is a little bit of a challenge, and adjustments are typically going to have to be made, and that is also stated in their development agreement.
So, and because we're running out of time, let me just make sure I understand. We. We don't get to three point five unless three point four is approved. And, but even if three point four is approved, we, are we still, this is still something that could be tabled or? Yes, no, or table?
Either concept area plants?
Or the, yeah, the.
The subdivision?
Yeah, the subdivision.
If you feel it doesn't meet the development agreement or the ordinance, you can certainly make a motion to that effect.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that everyone is familiar with whatever our options are.
Now, I did put these all in one staff report.
Yeah.
So you'll see discussion on the concept area plans at the beginning of the staff report and the subdivision later on.
Good questions, Commissioner, time to clarify. Oh, Charlie. Sorry, Commissioner, I was going to tell you, I searched for exactly Weber County ARPA funds.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful that my Google is going to send you, this Google is going to send you at the same location that it sent me, but.
Weber County.
I don't know if it's tracking up all the things I look at and give me the most relevant or something.
Awesome.
You may have cookies in there.
I got cake.
Excuse me. Feel a party today. Sites and also documents in the parking lot. I, I always say, as long as you're here. No matter what time you show up.
That's usually my program, I'm usually late at some things, but. I'll show up. Like my brother-in-law went up to Jackson Hole on a motorcycle trip over the moon.
Like my brother-in-law went up to Jackson Hole on a motorcycle trip over the moon.
Yes. All right, we're gonna call, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call the meeting of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission to order. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, let the record indicate that all of the Ogden Valley Planning Commissioners are in attendance in the meeting. We have Commissioner Barber online with us. And uh, we will get started with the minutes. I know I have a few things. Does anybody else have any amendments for the minutes? Careful before you say that. Okay. I didn't have a moment to get this to you ahead of time, Marta, so I apologize. And I can give you my hard copy here if that helps as well. And and with that, if I'm giving you the hard copy, I'm not gonna take a moment to go over every single thing and just make the basic comment that I think in an effort probably for efficiency or anything, we often have, I'm guessing, cut and paste or copy and paste, because sometimes we'll have commissioners noted as present or staff present that weren't. And so just making a accounting of that. So for example, on both sets of minutes, our wonderful attorney is not listed, a different person is listed, things like that. Bill Kobebe is still listed on all of our things, people that are no longer in attendance or employed here are continually listed on our minutes. So I'll give you my hard copy. Most of it is that. Some logistical issues. Uh, there was uh, there was something about getting clear on page one of August twenty seventh. Uh, that one says minutes of a work session where that was actually an official meeting. So just clarifying that, again, the staff and things like that are misrepresented. And then whether or not it makes a difference, I don't know, but at the bottom of page four, in the final paragraph, and this is gonna sound really detail oriented, and I apologize, it's just how I am. After it says the authority under bullet item number three to the planning director, I'm only saying this because it actually went back and forth a number of times in that meeting. We specifically asked for the language of land use authority. I know they're the same person, but it was specifically requested at the time. And those are my minute reports.
We need you to speak into the mic.
June, or excuse me. August sixth, we brought up the minutes of the June twenty fifth meeting.
Yes.
And they were tabled.
Yes.
So that the chair could add additional.
And those were from me, and I have not, I that is, I haven't submitted them, I I forgot, and they haven't been put back to us. So I don't know if they automatically got put through, but I I never ended up submitting my corrections.
Okay, so they're still tabled.
Okay, so I didn't, I so thank you, I didn't realize, yeah, so then I will, so I owe Marta. What was the date? January? No, not January. What was the date of those minutes? July, June?
Uh, June twenty fifth.
June twenty fifth.
Twenty four, and they should have come up on August twenty seventh, but they apparently didn't. So they're still hanging out there, I guess.
They won't be very soon. I'll I'll put forth my corrections. And we'll circle back. All right, does anyone else have any amendments for the minutes? Yeah, I was just about to do that. There was discussion, because then I was told by Mr. Erickson that I could put it, so. Let me just go ahead and say that if there are no other amendments to be made to the minutes, then we will move those to be approved. The corrections. I, next up here, it just lists that we go ahead and disclose any, do any planning commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications they need to declare for tonight's agenda? All right, and then here is where I move, or I need someone to make a motion to move the amendment. Uh, not the amendment, the consent items out of consent and under administrative items from our agenda. Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
I'll motion to move the consent items to the administrative agenda.
I will second that.
All in favor? All right, so moved. All right. We will, yes, we're gonna go right into it. All right, so. All right, so usually this is where we would have the director, I'm guessing, Mr. Charlie, you were just sitting in for the director, would explain administrative items, and in this case, conditional use permits as well.
Perfect, so conditional use permits in general, as well as the other administrative items that are on your agenda. Essentially, they are permitted uses. If it's a conditional use permit, permitted with conditions. And so anything that we do tonight needs to make sure it falls in line with the county code, including whatever conditions we may apply to the conditional use permits. I know from a staff perspective, we put together some possible suggested conditions and findings on some of these items here. You guys are, feel free to add more findings to that list and add more conditions to that list on the conditional use permit specifically. You just need to make sure that those conditions are tied to standards that are in our land use code and that we're not essentially working off the book. With that in mind, our first item is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a new lifts sewer lift station that will be owned and operated by Powder Mountain Water and Sewer Improvement District, located at forty four seventy seven north, four thousand east. And the planning commission can, if you choose to take public input, but you are not required to on administrative items. And Tammy will do the presentation.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, this is located, this is a request, as Charlie stated, for conditional use approval for a public utility substation is what we call these. Powder Mountain Water and Sewer is looking to expand some of their infrastructure, and this is a part of those plans. Some of the things that are considered with a conditional use application, we're looking at landscaping standards, architectural standards. And then, of course, anything that may be potentially detrimental, we're looking at at safety and how does this blend in with the environment surrounding uses. So staff has taken a look at this, we've looked at the plans that have been submitted, including the building elevations that were mentioned in the pre-meeting. And while the plans indicate, though it's difficult to read, that this is textured CMU, it is part of the standards that that the exterior looks like natural stone. So it's colored in a way, it's textured in a way, so that it doesn't look like CMU. And certainly, there is, there is a line in the staff report that states that any deficiencies that are found in these plans can certainly be addressed in this meeting as part of the conditions of approval. And so staff would recommend approval of this public utility substation subject to the condition listed in the staff report, as well as any others that the planning commission feels appropriate, including those related to the architectural details on the elevations.
I'm gonna start by asking the commission if anybody has any questions or any further clarification for Tammy.
I just have a question on exactly where that pump station is.
This pump station is located in, if you're familiar, where the Sheep Creek Cluster subdivision is located, it's located within their common area. The lift station itself will be located on the west side of four thousand east. And then the main line that they'll be replacing, it runs under the road into the east.
Okay, it's just a little bit out of the way to Powder Mountain, is what I'm thinking.
That is a question for Powder Mountain. I'm not a water and sewer district specialist.
So can you show us on a map, you know, kind of zoom in to where this is?
Sure. This highlighted parcel is where it will be located. Forty one hundred north. They're going to be running some infrastructure through here, it will come through common area, and the lift station will be located across four thousand east to Sheep Creek Drive. These ponds up here. Correct. Now, there may be some easements there, I'm not entirely sure, but the parcel itself is privately owned.
So where does the sewer line go from the new lift station?
So all the, all Powder Mountain Water and Sewer has given to me are the plans that they're planning to, are the infrastructure that they're planning to modify or install. So here on the map, the lift station will be located right around this area. The new line will run under the road through the common area and believe it comes up through here and will connect up here. Now, Powder Mountain Water and Sewer indicated to me they'd have a representative here tonight, and I'm sure he can give you much more detail than engineered answers than I can, but that's what I've got for you.
The applicant has indicated that he is present with the applicant like to speak.
Hey, thanks for considering this. My name is Roy Watson, the manager of Powder Mountain Water and Sewer Improvement District. Well, typically you do, but so this project is an ARPA project, it's the sewer system in that area has been there for, that's nineteen eighty something, I believe. Uh, all we're doing is fixing existing lift stations that already are there. The one that was in place was outdated and inflated and creating a risk for the community. So this sewer system and the lift station we're fixing is for strictly for the Sheep Creek area. It does not take care of the rest of Powder Mountain, that's why it it feels like it's a long ways away. Uh, the boundary is for the district is around that subdivision. And then we have a boundary up at Powder Mountain, so it's a separate little satellite area of the district that was built back in the Kobe days. And so the lines and all of the infrastructure already existed. We went in and put in a, a new force main to take the sewage from the lift station, push it up into lagoons. There was already one there, but it was not, uh, it was outdated and dangerous. It eliminates two other lift stations that are potentially a risk to the community. And so this is for the homeowners there, this is strictly to get their subdivision taking care of a modernizer sewer system. And fortunately, the commission felt that the ARPA funds would help to to make sure this happened, as well as to make some improvements at the lagoons so that the uh, sewer lagoons are safer. And so what we did is we, and and we've got our engineers from Tyler here from Bowen Collins can talk to the details of uh, working with the homeowners association, they identified the safest, most aesthetic place to put the lift station. The one that was there was underground by the park, and it was just felt out of place. They asked us if we would move the lift station uh, to a place in a common area that they have, there's a parking area right next to the park. And then that parking area was opened up, we could do construction and get out of the roads and not tear up the roads. And so we moved the lift station a little further north. Um, we had to go a little bit deeper balls, and we modernized the pump system that's in there, and we were putting a generator on it, so it's always has backup power, which it never had, which is dangerous. So with the current standards and modernization, and we'll spend about a million and a half dollars improving that lift station for that subdivision. And and so the little building, they approved the block, they approved the design, they approved the location, they approved the landscaping. So they've had a, they've had an intimate hand in making sure it looks nice in their community. So anyway, so just to understand, so it's modernization of existing sewer lift station. It's putting generators on it and putting a better quality lift station and eliminating two other lift stations that were problematic and dangerous. And and then there there are existing easements, the whole, where the pipes and all the infrastructure and everything go is a common area that is, is in their, their easement, CCNRs, I guess you call, they call out those areas as uh, common areas for utilities. And so that's why they asked to put it back in the common areas, all all this infrastructure went back in common areas that were for utilities in their, in their subdivision development documents. So anyway, so we've gotten to that point where we know we had, and and there was a question, I think, in your documentation asking why a pipeline sewer line was abandoned. And any detail, I'll ask Tyler to explain it, but basically, because we moved the lift station a few hundred feet north, uh, it changed the grading of the sewage coming one direction, and we had to tip it and run it back the other direction because we moved it uphill. And so we had to extend the pipes and lower it in the ground, and we get it back to the brand new lift station where the homeowners wanted it for it. So that's really, that's why we did it always, again, to accommodate them, and they felt it was more pleasing where it was at. Uh, it, the the device we're putting in there is a much more robust pump system. It contains the sewage smell. Commissioner Burton knows about what that's like to have lift stations by your home. Um, and so this eliminated that risk, it keeps all the sewage in the pipes, you can't smell the odor, it's hydrogen sulfide gas that it contains, so it doesn't offend the people at the park too, so that was another consideration of doing it, so. Anyway, so all of those reasons, that's why we did everything we did, safety, quality, better community, and prevention of risk of spills and damages to the water in the system. So, any question?
So, so this particular lift station, this one, which is using ARPA funds, is the million dollars you mentioned from the ARPA, or is that separate?
It's from the ARPA.
Okay, and this is specifically going to benefit this community?
Yes, that's correct.
And you mentioned at two different locations, dangers that you were looking to mitigate, one was with the station and one was at a lagoon.
Uh, so there's three lift stations, the one we're fixing is is the one that's uh, we're leaving in place, basically leaving a lift station, there were two more, a little further up the hill next to the, to the sewer lagoons. Um, and those were in more remote locations, they were harder to get to, and they were always dangerous and hard for us to get to, we always were scared that they were gonna over top, and so we are going to eliminate those. This gave us a better pump system, pushed the sewage from there, cleared the top and into the lagoons, so we eliminated those two dangerous lift stations.
Okay, and then you also had mentioned when you were talking about the lagoons dangers that you were mitigating up at the lagoon, so.
Yeah, if anybody's up that way, if you go up, you'll see we've made a lot of improvements. Again, we used ARPA money, uh, just because it's so expensive. Uh, we modified the plumbing on the lagoons, where we we improved the roadway systems around it, we'll improve the fencing. Uh, we're working with Division of Water Quality to make sure that all this is done according to what they like. And so we'll improve the integrity of the lagoons, the overflow systems, the plumbing in between the ponds, so we can move sewage, we have to work on any one of them. But the hope, the plan is someday to move to maybe an MBR in the area. Wouldn't have to be super big, just for the few people that will probably serve. But that's what the state would always like us to do, is get out of lagoons and and not be evaporating the sewage away, but it's hard in that area to be able to do anything with the effluent, it's a closed system. So that's why they built those lagoons back in the day. So they're functional, they do well, but we have spent another about a million dollars on those, and that was ARPA money also. And that would, that benefits not only that community, it benefited one time the And that, that benefits not only that community, it benefited one time the snowflake area, but we've since took that into Wolf Creek's sewer system. And then it'll benefit the development up at Powder Mountain there to give them a better system and then eventually hopefully move to something more modern in the upcoming years.
Mr. Watts, what, how was the water discharged after it's treated in the lagoon? Is it discharged? Is it just?
It's evaporated away. Yeah, the state, and there's several places they use evaporation technology for sewer lagoons. The first pond, the bugs eat up pretty much everything in and it hits the second pond and by that time it's uh, you know, a, a better class of water. Uh, but that, that about that point, it starts to evaporate pretty much everything away. It's crazy how it does that. Um, and then the other, other two ponds are there for overflow and uh, spring conditions and things like that. Uh, but uh, yeah, those can actually handle more water and give you more time to evaporate if you have to.
Salids that accumulate that need to be maintained?
For me?
Are there solids that accumulate that need to be maintained?
Yeah, um, we, we have those uh, checked every few years. The state divisional water quality or one of the consultants will come out and actually float out on the pond in a boat and check the depth and see how much uh, solids have accumulated. It's never been much. I think in the years it has been there, it, it's only accumulated like maybe a foot and a half, I think it was eighteen inches or something like that. It's incredible the, the bacteria in the eats up stuff.
What's expected longevity of your repairs and changes?
Uh, they anticipate that they've probably survived for indefinitely, depending on how many uh, more units we put on there. Um, we believe that we could go till twenty thirty, maybe twenty fifty, depending on the growth rate that we see. Um, but we're hoping before that to move to something of a more modern technology, uh, MBR or something like that in the area.
And just for clarification, what you were just saying about the lifespan of twenty thirty, potentially twenty fifty. Was that for this particular lift station or were you speaking?
No, that was system. This lift station, once we get this done, it'll be there as long as subdivisions there, no matter what we do with it. And it would still, if we put an MBR up in that area, uh, we would still lift that sewage to a modern treatment. Possibly in that area, but you know, we haven't actually determined that site. It's close by probably and the lagoons could then be used as uh, reused ponds where the water could be put back in the subdivision. Actually, that subdivision has a secondary system. And the water could be at that point a class one water quality. You could use it as outside irrigation. It's actually almost drinking water quality, believe it or not. Once you, nobody will drink it, but that's what they say. The new tech, newest technology is called toilet tap and they're treating it in California and other places are drinking as fast as they treat it. But I don't think that would happen there, but there are plenty of people that would like the water in the area for agriculture. Uh, our problem isn't isn't uh, getting rid of the water. There's, unless it's treated, uh, there's a lot of farmers and a lot of other people that can use it on their crops and things.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
So it seems to me Salt Lake or the Salt Lake Canyons have lake effect for their ski resort. And Powder Mountain has lagoon effect.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, if we could do something with it anywhere else, we could, we would, but we're, they put them there because of the temperature and everything allows them to evaporate. But they probably could have done something on the mountain. But temperatures are just too cold to evaporate the sewage, the effluent away and stuff, the moisture. Well, unfortunately, we're putting that, sending that into the atmosphere and it's going into Arizona, or, or up into Wyoming or someplace and it'd be nice to try and treat that and somebody keeping the community, but uh, it's a closed base and it might make it hard to do.
So are those treatment ponds, are they servicing any other area from Powder Mountain above?
No, they, they serve the Powder Mountain Resort Development. Uh, they, again, they used to serve the Snowflake area and that was changed, switched over and sent into the Wolf Creek uh, sewer system. So they take, it takes care of the outer mountain development and it takes care of that subdivision right there. Any questions?
Just, uh, well, just for clarification, Commissioner Barber, uh, having myself been on the backend of being zoomed in, it's sometimes hard to get in. I want to make sure that if you have any questions, you have an opportunity to ask.
No, I, I've heard everything and um, I'm all set at this point.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for our planning staff that presented this item?
Just Commissioner Frow brought up this exterior treatment on the lift station didn't meet code or but it wasn't written in the staff report it didn't meet code?
It wasn't clear in the plans or legible in the plans that it was a more of a textured CMU. And perhaps staff missed making the point specifically that it needs to be more rolled stone. And not just textured CMU. If that makes sense, that was the point that was brought up.
Is there more demand now for the CMU type surface?
I think it's probably the most cost effective, so it's typically always pitched to planning staff. I, I don't know. Do you have any other thoughts on that, Charlie?
No, I thi- I think it's a cost, uh, question of cost. So, uh, one thing I noted from uh, the applicant's presentation is that whatever the surface material is, sounds like it needs to go through the architectural committee of the HOA as well. Um, so I, I'd be a little cautious in being hyper-specific about any condition you may apply. But um, uh, we can certainly work with the HOA and the applicant to make sure that
I was just concerned that maybe the code lags behind practical application today.
Uh, I think it may be a little bit of uh, the, the other way around. I think we specifically adopted this because of the emerging uh, frequency in which uh, CMU and split, split face CMU was used. However, in certain circumstances such as a, a wellhouse like this, I'm not sure it's the worst thing in the world. It's such a small impact and such a small building. Using it on a larger building like a, a grocery store or a storage unit might be a little bit more impactful to the community.
Yes. Can you, I'm sorry, I know, but the people online need it.
Um, and so we, we worked with the HOA and, and we told them, pick whatever they wanted. And we would put it in there. Um, and so this is what they chose to go in their community because they liked the looks of it. Um, I don't know if it affects any of your decisions. We're, we're fine with changing the block. There, I think they're fine with it if it, if it doesn't uh, fit something in the code or anything, but uh, it's just the fact that the community chose that uh, style and they could have used whatever they wanted.
Did I answer everything? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, um, let me ask first, uh, was anybody in the audience here that wanted to speak directly to this specific agenda item? We don't have many people in the room. Was anybody online specifically coming about this particular item? Okay, so.
You should, your chair. I just like to clarify. If we, so the question that was asked was, does it meet code, right? And we know that's and for me personally, if this is what they chose with whatever it is they chose. That's what they wanted. I'm fine with it. Right, are we approving something outside of that, I just want to clarify. Like that we don't approve something outside of both. It's not because I mean, I'm happy if that's
We're consulting right now to, uh, we're looking at both the conditional use permit code as well as the design review code, just to see what latitude you have.
And I think just for public record, while they confer with each other. Um, I think that often happens, right? Uh, the people who are sitting up on the commission are not here trying to tell people what color to paint their house or what materials to use. Uh, but we are bound by codes and ordinances and um, and have to approve accordingly. So while we might not want to stipulate that, um, they will, the land use authority will come back and tell us whether or not they can make that change.
I, I think it's important to make sure that those people that make the code keep up with the times. And, and don't restrict what the public wants done.
When we're allowed to.
Yeah. And hence the attorneys about.
Right. So, um, just as a matter of general advice, I would say you know, you are under no obligation to defer to an architectural committee or an HOA generally when they are recommending or asking for something that violates the county code. That would not be something that would generally be your responsibility or even necessarily, you know, within your purview. We were just looking to see if there is anything in the conditional use permit code like Charlie mentioned that would allow you to depart from the general standard that the architectural part of the code requires and um, it's, uh, in, in my opinion, a little bit hard to justify that, but um, yeah, so what the code says as far as the architecture part with respect to CMU construction is concrete masonry units or block CMUs shall not be considered acceptable materials unless it is specially colored and textured to give an appearance of natural rough stone. That's the sentence that deals with that. So for what it's worth, um.
So if you feel like split face CMU can adhere to that, then you probably make an approval on this. Doesn't specifically say you can't use split face.
So I don't know anything about these two materials, these two different products. My concern would be that because it's an ARPA project, it's using public funds. If for whatever reason the code was written because of whether something was more durable or long lasting or whatever, or safety, or whatever. And we don't follow it. I don't know that you know, this isn't private funds asking for a private opinion. I, I would think maybe because it's an ARPA project, we go with what the code says and, and my apologies with it. I'll entertain a motion.
Or, or you could just say nothing and let the planning division in its review determine whether or not it meets the code. I mean, you could say nothing specific about that if you chose to.
Referring to the whole the whole item or just the material?
I, I was referring specifically to the materials. If you chose to not even address it in your motion and just leave it as is in the staff report. Then that would be the basis for, for your motion.
Do you specify that we're omitting or we just don't address it?
Totally up to you, but I mean, you could just choose not to address it at all.
Once again, I will entertain a motion.
I just got we, we started this discussion about potential detrimental effects being mitigated. Uh, and then we kind of ran out of time. It begs the question, what are they? But if we say, if the staff said in its recommendation there don't appear to be any, that solves the problem.
Do you want to hear from Mr. Siemens if there were any mitigations handled to the engineering? Present?
Well, I think I mean, it's always nice to have an expert tell us if he saw any detrimental effects that need to be mitigated or will be mitigated in a certain manner.
I think I heard that they did when he mentioned that they, they moved, they wanted to move to a new location to fit the, fit the community's desires and plans that was there. And they changed the piping to make it work better for the, the system. So it sounded like they did do that. I mean, that's what I heard.
Well, it sounds like the whole project is mitigating detrimental effects that exist now before the project's even considered.
And, and the project itself is
Is not going to create any additional ones. Yeah.
I'm good with it, but.
So Tyler Siemens with Bowen Collins. Uh, just to throw in, I think the discussion, I think we're on the same page. It's purely cosmetic. Is that, we're all on that understanding? Because the CS
Is criteria for issuance of a conditional use permit has been met because mitigation of potential detrimental effects can be accomplished. We just didn't know if there were potential detrimental effects and if they were mitigated or how they were mitigated. But it seems that the presentation covered that. We just want to make sure that we have covering any issues.
Yeah, I think Roy covered it.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, item two point one CUP twenty twenty four dash ten. Request for approval of conditional use permit findings in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
That's Commissioner Barber seconding. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Everybody approves, I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody, um, oppose?
Nay.
That's a nay. You oppose it? No, I just wasn't sure if you were saying nay to the opposing. I just wanted to clarify. So we do have, uh, there are seven of us, so six approve if I'm not mistaken and one oppose. All right. So our next item, uh, I believe will be presented by Ms. Tammy as well. This is
Do you mind if we, I'd love to know if there's
Oh, yes, my apologies. Would you like to explain, uh, the reason, would anyone like to explain the reason for their vote, actually? You're given an opportunity to do so. Okay. Uh, if nobody would like to, then we will move on to the second item. Item two point two CUP twenty twenty four dash twelve. The request for approval of a conditional use permit for a new booster pump and wellhouse for water monitoring located at thirty one forty east fifty three hundred north Liberty, Utah eight four three one oh.
Thank you. This is a conditional use application submitted by Liberty Pipeline to increase some of their infrastructure specifically for a booster pump station and some water monitoring equipment on a parcel that already contains some of their infrastructure. Um, again, we, when we look through conditional uses, we're looking at any detrimental effects, noises, odors, landscaping interruption or uh, interruption to the surrounding environment, traffic, anything like that. Planning has looked through the submitted engineered plans and has had discussions with the applicant and doesn't feel that there, there are any conflicts with the ordinance for a public utility substation um, in this AV three zone. And so staff would recommend approval. Subject to excuse me, make sure. I don't think we uh, we didn't put any additional conditions in there um, other than subject to all review agency requirements and uh, based on the findings outlined in the staff report. Again, there may be a discussion on the elevations and the materials used. And so uh, if there need to be additional uh, if there need to be additional conditions tied to that, planning commission can certainly impose those.
Do we have any questions? Planning staff? This is again an ARPA funded project. This one's out in Liberty closer to North Fork.
Correct. And I think we might have a representative from Liberty Pipeline here if you have questions for them as well.
Anybody have questions for Tammy?
Tammy is the diagram. Okay. Yeah. You just brought it up.
So this little parcel here is where there is some existing equipment already and they're looking to again, expand some of their infrastructure and install um, some additional equipment on this site.
Will it replace any existing buildings?
Uh, I'm not aware that it will. I think their site plan has labeled a str- there is a I think there's a shed in this area that they're going to be pulling off, but this structure here will remain.
And this is to pump water up to a higher tank for more pressure and to safeguard against drought here's.
Uh, specific engineering questions, I'm going to defer to Liberty, but the intent is to increase their, their pumping capabilities. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the Bolster, uh, Willow Creek subdivision's water?
That's a question for Liberty Pipeline. We don't have their service area maps at planning, so that'd be a question for them.
I know that in the past they've had issues over there. I just wondering if they're, you know, expand and help them out a little bit.
If you don't have any questions for me, I'm happy to turn the microphone over to Liberty if you'd like.
It sounds like that would be appropriate. Would the applicant like to come up?
Hi, I'm Jamie Hadlock. I'm president of Liberty Pipeline Board. Go ahead and ask your questions.
Will there be a generator on site? Backup generator for power outage?
Not on this one.
On a issue with sound in the neighborhood?
Pardon me?
There are no, there will be no issue with
Oh, no.
Sound in the neighborhood?
No, it's just, there's already a building there or moving it out, just replacing it with the more solid, a tiny bit larger building so that we can put the booster pump. We're also refurbishing the Willow, um, Creek well. So the well housing will be inside there and our SCADA system, which monitors all of our water flow will be in there.
So that's, so that'll be additional water from Willow Creek.
Well, when we get the Willow Creek well running, it'll run into the system. But this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the well.
Okay, they're separate still.
Pardon me?
Are they still separate or you got it combined?
Well, they'll all, all, all water sources will be able to go in and we'll be able to direct the water where it's needed.
Okay.
It's about CMUs that's the beat that.
There'll be a, a fence all around it. And the front side that you'll see is will be mainly two big doors. There'll be one big door that goes to the booster pumps. And then there's a smaller door that goes into where the computer system, the SCADA system is housed.
As far as the building materials.
Um, it's, it's the, um, concrete brick textured. We've already built one up in Derfie Creek just like that that was approved. So we didn't think there was going to be an issue with that.
Sounds like the texture.
You'll only be able to see just the front. It, the, the way the landscaping is there, it goes right back into a a hillside. So the building will kind of be pushed back in.
So there was a comment just a moment ago about the potential of there being a shed that might be removed is, is that separate from?
It's just like a little tough shed.
So it is a separate structure than what we're discussing right now?
Can just pick it up and move it.
Okay. What is it housing right now?
It's just housing our, our SCADA system, our computer monitoring system.
Which will now be under the same roof.
It'll be in with the booster pump system. Yeah.
Out of curiosity, is it a full like tear down and rebuild or you, um, just adjusting, just upgrading the current building?
It's just a tough shed that's there right now. So it's weird. So I'm picking it up, move it. And then we're going to start putting foundation in for the other.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Barber, you're able to speak if you'd like. Thank you very much. Are there any further discussion points or questions that we'd like to have fleshed out about this agenda item? Is there anyone online or in the audience that came specifically to speak about this agenda item? Not seeing or hearing from anybody? When you all are ready, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve CUP 2024-12 based on the recommendation made by staff. And but I'd like to modify one of the findings. The criteria for issuance of a conditional use permit have been met because mitigation of potential detrimental effects can be accomplished. I'd like to modify it by stating that because mitigation of any potential detrimental effects can and will be accomplished. That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Just for the minutes.
Second.
All right.
So Charlie's mentioned that we wanted to so I think you weakened the
I, I generally like to not necessarily be softer, but generally like to be less definitive or less decisive, more so if things go on appeal. Um, sometimes when, uh, you get in front of a judge or, or in front of the board of adjustment, they're looking at well, the planning commission said, made this statement specifically. Uh, and so that means that all the bolts are definitely going to be as tight as they need to be, for example. Um, so rather than an umbrella statement, something like to the extent that, um, we know of any detrimental effects, we believe that they are being, uh, mitigated.
Would you be open to?
Well, I, I word it this way because with the conditional use permit, it can be revoked if you don't meet the requirements in the conditional use permit. And if we find the bolts aren't tightened and they refuse to tighten them, then the permit is revoked.
And no, uh, no problems with, uh, with your thought process on that. Um, sometimes my only, um, thought on that was sometimes it's nice to, if you say that all the, all the bolts are tight, you know, for example, and it turns out they're not tight and you come back and you recall it or you, or you go to revoke it. Um, how is somebody going to use the language against you in the future? That's, that's the only thing I think about when I'm looking at this kind of stuff. I don't think it's a of big consequence on this particular item. So would, whatever you guys choose.
I, I think the staff, I, I suggest the staff look at this kind of a finding that's going to show up all the time in, in a case like this. And, uh, word it so that the staff has found no potential hazards that that exist. If any show up, they need to be mitigated by the applicant or their permit is revoked.
I think that's fair and we'll, we'll talk about that.
Something like that.
Yeah, we'll round table that in staff menu. I think there's a good way we can put together some template language to use.
Yeah. I think the way I worded this was if there are potential ones there, then they can be mitig- can end, they will be mitigated or the CUP will be revoked.
It's good. I think it's clearing the record too.
All right. With that clarity, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, sorry. Uh, there was already a second. So all in favor, yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, this agenda item passes unanimously. Next up, we have another administrative item. We are on 3.4. Tammy will explain it all. Excuse me, do I need to read this request to approve?
Oh, that's, you can read it or I can read it. Either way, Commissioner.
Uh, you go ahead, Tammy. 3.4.
Okay. To introduce this item, this is a request for two things. Uh, one is a request for modification of a couple of concept area plans in the Powder Mountain Development Agreement, uh, recorded development agreement along with this request or accompanying this request is that of preliminary approval for the Shelter Hill subdivision, a 39 lot subdivision in the DRR1 zone at approximately 6965 East Powder Mountain Road in Eden. Let me pull up the
Adam Chair, while, while Tammy's pulling that up, would it be beneficial to make sure it's clear for the record and anyone who may be online that item 3.3 was removed from the agenda by the applicant?
Uh, if that's helpful, yes. Sorry. I was under the impression that that was announced and so removed. Um, but if it's not clear, then yes. Uh, originally there was an item prior to this one. 3.3 CUP 2023-07, which was a request for conditional use permit for agritourism operations located at 4661 Creekview Drive. That had been, I believe, requested by the applicant to be removed from the tonight's meeting. So, uh, next up online is 3.4, which is this, um, plan in the meadows for Powder Mountain.
Okay, I'm going to present just a few maps. The applicant is here. And so you, if you've got specific, uh, questions for them, I'm sure they'll be happy to make themselves available for that. This is located, um, right around the end of Summit Pass Road. This request for a plan modification falls under their second amendment to their zoning development agreement. So this amendment was recorded back in 2022 that allowed for these very conceptual development area plans to be amended from time to time administratively versus legislatively, meaning the entire development agreement doesn't have to be amended and opened up for public hearing. So these are, this is before you as an administrative request. Um, when the second amendment discusses these, it calls these slight and inconsequential. And so it is your job this evening to determine whether these proposed changes fit under that, uh, category of slight and inconsequential. When we talk about these, we're talking about, um, realignment of roadways to better align with the topography. We're talking about, um, changes of use a little bit. So where you may have some, some mixed use or some multifamily, the developer may be proposing some single family in that location. To be clear, density is not shifting into or out of these specific development areas. And their development agreement is very specific on that point. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. This is the this here. This is the existing, um, mountain village development plan here, village master plan. And I'm just going to kind of go through these. It'll allow me here. These are some of their red lines. We're talking about this area here. That they're looking at changing some of the street alignments, shifting around some of the product types. This is mixed use commercial. To this, looking like this right here. They're actually looking to amend, to amend two development areas. They both fall on either side of this boundary here. Okay. This is the Meadow Master Plan. This is specifically the area we're looking at for the subdivision purposes. But this is the master plan for the Meadow. These are their red lines. They're eliminating some density here. They're realigning some roadways and, and removing some of these here. And I'll show you what that proposal looks like. You can see they've got a single road that comes down. And as we get towards the subdivision itself, you'll see how that, um, how their road alignment will look with lots on either side. And so those, that's what they're proposing as far as their modification of their concept area plans. Now, I can step back and allow you to make a motion on this now, or you can, and I'm sure I'll defer to courtland. See if you want to make these motions, one right after the other, after the subdivision is presented. How would you like to proceed?
My commission, if anyone has a preference, I'm hearing one at a time. Okay. Sounds like one at a time.
Okay. Now this would be a request for approval of these changes to their concept area plans based on them being seen as slight and inconsequential. If you feel that they're not, these would have to go through a development amendment. Process. So.
Can you go back to the slides you had where you were showing us what it currently is and then what they were proposing? There was, there were two separate pictures.
Yep. So we've got area D, which is this area here. They're showing the, the boundaries of some of these areas just to make it easier. This is what it, let me go back actually, sorry. This is currently what it looks like. You can see all these roadways kind of looked at. Again, these are conceptual in nature and it was how it was intended. Versus what they're proposing. So they've minimized some of their, little bit of their roadway system. They've condensed some of this product right here. Which is their mixed use commercial. And I'll kind of toggle back and forth if that makes it easier for you guys. So they're condensing it more here with one central road that comes down. That's for area D. You okay if I move to area?
Let's go back again.
Yep.
So point on with your cursor again.
This area here. So you can see this, this, this roadway system, this connectivity system with all of these roadways. They're looking to centralize kind of the main road coming down and consolidate more of that mixed use commercial here. Just like that. So they've got all of their mixed use here and then they've got their residential along the outside. They don't have that, um, pretty complex street system in here either.
And to clarify, the question we're being asked is between those two pictures, do we consider this slight and inconsequential?
Mm-hmm. And the development agreement again does call out the realignment uh, of roadways and product type to be considered as slight and inconsequential. Or can be considered slight and inconsequential.
So the mixed use in the red,
Mm-hmm.
The a lot of roads have been eliminated in that area. Will there still be road access eventually? So this is where we're looking at existing right now.
Mm-hmm.
The plan and the plan is moving to just a single road through that area. Mixed use hotel and commercial still exists, but will that be changed down the road with more roads?
That's a question for the developer. I couldn't tell you at this time.
Okay. So there's more of a pass through at this time.
This is what they're showing us right now. So the assumption is unless they change from, from what may be approved tonight, this is what will go on. And then you've got the boundary here of that area. They are proposing some changes to both of these areas here. So as to whether or not they will further modify, that's a question for the developer.
Thank you.
You go back again. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna
You're just fine. You're just fine.
If there was a split screen, it'd be amazing. And I would use my papers, they're just smaller. So consolidating the red mixed use, eliminating roads. And you were saying the definition in the development agreement is that road changes and things fall under slight. It doesn't specify how many or how large of the changes there would be that would still remain slight.
It doesn't, and I think that's intentional, left up to the land use authority to determine that.
This is like being at the optometrist, isn't it?
Better A, better, better be A or B, one or two.
Now, if you want me to show you the other area, because they're, they're proposing these areas together.
Yes, let's, let's make sure we understand the complete package, yes.
So this is what we're looking at now. Now, this is just this is this area here. So that you know.
Liver.
Okay, this is the Meadow Master Plan down here. This is where their subdivision is proposed. Okay, you can see the connectivity here, additional roadways here. And again, the developer may come back at a later time down the road and want to amend this, and they would have to come through a similar process. So this is what they're proposing. And I'm gonna toggle back and forth here. You've got, this is pretty similar. They are eliminating some of the single family area, just to have a little bit of a buffer. But I think probably the main changes to this are in this area right here. That's where you're gonna see an elimination of a lot of those roads, and I I think topography in this area generally is very challenging, and I'm sure that that played a big part in this request. So I'll go back and forth a little bit. They've got a, they are proposing a loop road. These are gonna be narrower roads in the subdivision, just a little bit. They're sixty foot wide, but in an effort to just in case of emergency, make it easier, planning has asked that they do their best to try and show us couple different ways out, just ways to probably, to hopefully relieve any congestion that may occur in the event that an evacuation is necessary. So they've got a couple of little loop roads they're showing, and you'll see that more detail on their subdivision plan.
And are these roads gonna be private roads?
Private roads.
Correct me if I'm wrong. This is the area where there's currently access to the Brim Trail, which is a popular public trail.
So all of the, all access to all the trails will remain the same. So despite being a private road, there will still be public access to all of the trails. Everything that's within their development agreement that grants public access will still remain.
Okay, and, and I know that we're often charged with ensuring connectivity and additional, you know, amenities, trails, various things. Is any of that being adjusted or taken into account here?
Yes, the subject of connectivity is discussed at length frankly with the developer. I'm sure they're probably tired of hearing about it a little bit from us, but we are tasked with making sure that the safety of the people up here is, is foremost, and so we are currently in discussions about finding a secondary way off of the mountains, so that will, that will come hopefully in the next year or two, but in the meantime, we have asked the developer to provide things like evacuation plans, emergency plans, in case there's a wildfire or something up there. Fire, emergency services aren't as concerned during the wintertime, but more in the summertime. So we just want ways to be able to get people off of there safely in a way that's not gonna further endanger people.
I mean, I, I just noticed, could, could you go back? So here we have, I'm looking at the development legend there. The hotel, multi-family, single family. So how is that changing? Since we can't see them at the same time. This is as it is now.
This is as it is, right. This is as it is now. You see a little bit of multifamily here and here.
I'm looking at the table on the right.
Right, this, this particular area that they're proposing to change doesn't have any multi-use that they're looking to alter necessarily. This is what they're, I suppose there's a little bit up here, but that would be included in the previous plan. What they are showing here is multifamily more consolidated and single family here.
Okay, so are the numbers the same? I'm looking at, single family now proposed would be two ninety-seven units. And existing today is how many? Is seventy-two plus?
Two ninety-seven.
Thirty-five, okay.
There, again, they're not proposing to shift any density in or out of these areas. Just shuffle it around within each respective area.
Okay, and the multifamily is sixty-two in both cases?
Yes.
Okay, and the hotel, one twenty. But then now they've added a retreat instead of a hotel. What's the difference there?
I couldn't tell you at this time.
You said, you mentioned boutique hotel. So that.
That is part of their development agreement, their original recorded development agreement.
Okay. So does a retreat look different than a hotel?
I would assume so. That may be a question for the developer. We haven't, we haven't quite hit that development point yet.
Okay.
Administrative item.
Yes, also whether or not this complies with their development agreement. The development agreement oftentimes allows a little more flexibility than what the ordinance may allow in some instances, and so we defer to both. Whatever is not addressed in the development agreement, we then make sure that ordinance addresses it.
Specifically, this scenario, administrative. Small and inconsequential so that we don't have to have a public here type.
Correct, correct.
That's the first question.
The first question is, are these changes that are proposed, are they slight and inconsequential? And do you believe that they still meet the intent of their development agreement? And their, their master plans? Right.
Safety, welfare.
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for them separately. Does the applicant want to speak at all? I mean, you don't need to, but you can. Anyone has any questions?
Good evening. My name is Brooke Hans. I'm Chief Development and Construction Officer for Powder Mountain since about April of this year. I also have two additional coworkers with me that may have more information than I have, but based on some of the questions you kind of were kicking around, I wanted to make sure that we addressed a couple of things. I thank you for picking up Commissioner Burton on the, on difference in the the numbers is actually is the same on all of the numbers on the right-hand side. We haven't moved density around. I think they were consolidated in the single family to add up to be one total instead of two subtotals because they are both single family, so the it, the different, the, the difference didn't make sense to keep them as a call out as a separate unit since it is a single family unit type. But I also wanted to address just in general why we're here. We had planning staff and legal input that came to a different conclusion than where we were. So we had an understanding based on our development agreement and our Second Amendment regarding this concept plan change, that because these bubbles are so high level, and to be fair, I actually don't know if those are ten-foot or twenty-foot contours. But you're in essence, just, you know, when we took this through, prior to me and the team in the back of the room, and we had this approved. You're more at a very high level. The ground is flat-ish here. Our road probably works here. Sewer probably flows downhill, all of those things. And we're now in the refinement stage, obviously, at subdivision. And so when you come in and you do that, you need to make sure it actually works within the centimeter, millimeter, right? We're not at the ten-foot and twenty-foot contour level. And so one of the things that we struggled with and had the conversation with legal and staff was I, when you were going back and forth between the maps, and we tried to make it super obvious how different they were, they're not that different. And so I'm sorry that it's a struggle to indicate how similar they are because they are, you know, they really are. And so if we ever do this again, which I think we're going to be doing this again, because the concept plan basically is at too high of a level to be completely accurate when you're looking at putting things in the ground. And so we will try to figure out a way to make sure that the minor, the slight and inconsequential, because that is the finding that we're hoping you're gonna make, is very obvious, but it's hard to do so when it is that slight. So if there are any specific questions regarding what we're doing here, we did try to simplify. There was a lot of, back when this originally came through and had the development agreement attached to it. There was a concept of very, very tiny units closely clustered and lots of alleyways and tiny like snickets and things like that, and even some places that didn't have road access to get to them. And that frankly doesn't work at a mountain that receives, you know, hopefully more than five hundred inches of snow a year. And so the impacts of a plan like that with a lot of infrastructure were not as, as intelligent as what we're trying to do now. And so that's why you see the simplification also on the map. Happy to take any questions, though.
Okay, as I look at the two options, the first option, the only thing that I see changing is the layout of the roads. Is that accurate? You're, you're not changing the mixed use rooms, you're not changing the multifamily units. You're not changing the single family units. It's just the roads.
Are you to be, so make sure I speak accurately. Are you looking at the map that's on the screen now or the previous one?
So this map that's on the screen now is what you're proposing. The previous map was what is already approved.
Correct.
So you're eliminating, at least where this squiggly red line is, you're eliminating a fair amount of those crossroads.
Yes, so the, so instead of having this length of road here.
Right.
This length of road here, plus these. And you're gonna see this actually better in the subdivision. The, you have one road, and it does kind of bubble out to make two one-lane roads to get the circulation we need. But yes, it is a, and there, it switched back. It is a much simpler road system with the elimination in, from that previous picture. Sorry, thank you. Of at least three roads connecting.
Thank you.
It's simplification of the roads, but if I'm not mistaken, you're also for lack of better terminology, kind of combining the mixed use and multifamily from separated sections into one combined section for each of those, whether it's.
Good observation, yeah, the, so the.
Not just roads.
See how there's no gap in the yellow or the in the blob, we call these bubble maps anymore, so because in, you know, in hi- yeah, hindsight, if I could go back, I would say it wasn't a great idea to create these bubbles with gaps in between them and the roads the way they were, because it's, it's far too specific when you're designing at the, at the contour levels here. So yes, we're, we've combined that yellow area into one, and then consolidated the multifamily area into one. So I, I think if we go back to the other map and Tammy will in just a second, there were one, two, three little nodes of that.
Right.
And see, one, two.
There were three brown.
And now we just have the one node right here.
And was there another map where there were maybe two mixed use red, and now there's one? Am I remembering that?
This, okay, so this area, yeah, do you wanna?
So this is, this is what is approved right now. And this is what is proposed.
So to your point, this area that kind of has some extra roads in it and gaps between the red. The red has been consolidated
Yes.
into here, and then the yellow, this red removed, and then the yellow continues down into this area. And this is what, so there it is in the request form. I like the idea of side screen, by the way. I think we'll do that.
Question the applicant. On these buffer zones that are proposed, are there, is there landscaping or are they just separated? How are you delineating the buffer zone?
Yeah, there, there is no consideration necessarily for any certain type of landscaping or anything. The, the way that we would see it is that that would remain natural. I mean, it, it could get enhanced in the future with landscaping. A lot of this is actually ski terrain, so you have to keep that in mind, and it needs to hopefully remain open and accessible for this game. You're welcome. I'll come back if you have any more questions. How's that?
Do we have any further, the commissioner have any further comments or questions or discussion points for staff or applicant? So what I propose is to call for a motion on item three point four, which is a request for approval of the changes of the concept area plan for Area F as shown. And I'm just gonna pause, it's all written there, but, and I want to remind everybody that what we're basically doing in this item is deciding if this falls under slight and inconsequential.
My thought is since nothing has been the, the earth hasn't been disturbed at this point. And it's just a direction to simplify the roads, open up and add more buffer zone. It simplifies the op, the option. Allows for snow removal and ease of access.
Can I propose a correction to staff's finding? We left out Area D in our recommendation for approval, so that should say for the Meadows and Summit Village, so Area D and Area F is what should be in that recommendation for approval.
This is for three point four, so where I specified Area F, it needs to be D and F.
D and F, yes, correct.
Courtland, or let me just make that. I'm not the one making a motion, but.
It's been stated, so as long as any motion agrees with that and states that it is for both of those, it should be clear.
If anybody would like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the three point four request for approval of change to a concept area plan for Areas D and F as stated in the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I, I was just going to ask that findings be stated to support the motion, and there are findings in the staff report that could be referred to if that is the intent of the motion, but just to make sure whatever the motion is, there are findings to explain the reasoning for it.
So I would add that the proposed changes, the land use authority, we determined that they are slight and inconsequential. Based on the presentation of staff and of the applicant.
I'm sorry, was that a proposed friendly amendment?
Yes.
And the second? Any discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, excuse me. All right. So moving from there, we get to move on to three point five UV. My apologies, I didn't even ask if there were, no, I didn't. I forgot. Commissioner Barber, were you able to? I forgot. Uh, Commissioner Barbara, were you able to vote?
Yes, I said aye.
Wonderful. Um, I believe that was a unanimous vote. None opposed, uh, and therefore moving on to agenda item 3.5 UV S oh, eight, two, 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 four, with a request of preliminary approval of the Shelter Hills subdivision. And Tammy is going to present that as well.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary approval of a 39 lot subdivision located in the DRR1 zone. Couple of things to note with this, the DRR1 zone doesn't have minimums for lot areas or widths. So you're going to see a variety of these proposed in their subdivision. They are proposing private right of ways throughout this subdivision and single family dwellings at this time. This is, so their their subdivision plat is composed of many pages, none of which really show in detail the entire subdivision. And so I brought up their connectivity plan, just so you can see what this looks like with all of the lots on here. You can see the roadways. Uh, this is something that we ask for typically with any subdivision application. Uh, what is their proposed connectivity plan? How are they going to make this safe? How are they going to meet fire requirements with turnarounds? Um, and so that's what they've submitted to planning staff and between that um, and their emergency plan, staff feels uh, confident that this meets their development agreement as well as the ordinance. Um, Powder Mountain's water and sewer uh, will service this subdivision. They, the applicant has submitted a capacity assessment as is required with preliminary subdivision. We have other standards that will come into play as they move towards final subdivision approval. Um, and just a reminder that with recent changes to laws, that final subdivision approval will go to Rick Rover. The planning director is the land use authority for that. Public access to trails that are already in place, nothing will change as far as that goes. Access will will be maintained for the public. And so this one's, this one, to be honest, is pretty straightforward. We would recommend approval based on the conditions outlined in the staff report and subject to the findings in there as well. With your approval of the concept area plans, we feel that this falls directly in line with those approved changes and their development agreement and the DRR1 zone. Do you have any questions for me or for the applicant?
This is preliminary, right?
Correct.
I have a question. Tammy, can you explain, um, can you go back one or two slides? Um, when, no, but go forward one now.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, there, right there.
Okay.
DRR1 has no minimum area or width requirements for lots. Can you explain what that means?
So um, lot sizes and widths are typically determined by the zoning ordinance in play where that parcel of land is located, right? So in a forest valley three zone, we require a minimum area of three acres and a minimum lot width of 150 feet. Um, in an A1 zone, it's 40,000 square feet and 150 feet in width. In the DRR1 zone, there are no minimum requirements for area and width. That is how the zoning ordinance was written.
So what does that mean for somebody that wants to build a?
Well, they still have height requirements. They're limited to that size of that lot, so.
And look, so go back a couple of.
Sure.
And though I can't read it.
Uh, if you, now at this point where this is very preliminary, we don't necessarily have areas for all of these, but I can certainly have um, the applicant or representative for the applicant come up and explain the product types that they foresee on these particular lots.
So I guess one of my concerns is having served on the Board of Adjustment. We we got an awful lot of these Powder Mountain developments where the the now the lot owner wants to change the setbacks and the where they want to build a bigger house than what's allowed. What's the topography on this?
Uh, that is a question probably for Powder Mountain and they've got, um, they have an engineer here. I will say that for a lot of those Board of Adjustment applications that you've seen, those are not ones that are under a development agreement. Um, and so they are these kind of funky shaped lots that were platted before the zoning changed oftentimes or because of things like ski easements. It's limited their buildable area or they've got an irregular shaped lot. And so they have some of those things going against them. In this case, I wouldn't foresee really many at all, if any, that would go before the Board of Adjustment based on these. Um, Powder Mountain has very specific product types that they tend to put in each of their areas. So this isn't someone that can go in and build whatever they want. If that answers that question for you, kind of.
Kind of, thank you.
Okay.
Understand.
And again, the applicant is here if you've got questions that you'd like to um, direct towards them.
So hypothetically, if we approve this, do they have to jump through other hoops to get approval for the specific lot size, dimension, access, et cetera? Or is that a given if we approve this?
So when preliminary approval is granted, those lot, the the street layout, the number of lots, they're vested in that. And generally speaking, the size of those lots. Even though we don't have anything specific on here. Now, if someone were to come in and file a request for a variance, right? One of the things that the Board of Adjustment is tasked with looking at is whether or not this is a self-imposed hardship. You did purchase a lot this size. There's nothing that impedes developing on this lot. You don't have anything that further shrinks your buildable area outside of perhaps geology, but you really should know that when you go into it. Um, I think a lot of this would be seen as a self-imposed hardship if someone tried to do that. But again, there's an HOA. Um, this is very well regulated by Powder Mountain. Whereas some of the others that you've seen up in the Powder Mountain area are not. They don't fall under that development agreement, that HOA. So I I don't know that you'd see any variance requests. That's a good question, though.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Chair, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
And this relates to something that was noted earlier, but on the proposed conditions, it only mentions area F. Was that also supposed to be area D and area F for this subdivision or was it?
Oh, this is, this was addressed during the concept area. Thanks, Cortland.
I ask because it's two separate items and
Right.
this item also says area F only.
Oh, gotcha. We can certainly amend that to say area D as well.
If there are no further immediate questions from the commission, um, I do see a hand up and while we're not obligated to take public comment on administrative items, as a chair, I am more apt to do so. I I would like to remind the audience or the public that um, we will be limited on time for your speech. I believe it's three minutes. And that when it comes down to the actual decision making um, with administrative items, we will be restricted to our decision based off of whether or not it meets um, and conforms with the ordinance and code. But with that said, I would be happy to hear from the public. So I see at least one hand raised. So if anybody from the audience would like to make a comment or have a question about this specific agenda item, then I'd like to hear from that. So I see Mr. Gleason with his hand up.
Yes, good evening. This is uh, Ron Gleason. Thank you for the opportunity. Just a quick question. It's clear in all the documentation and things written that the access to trails will be maintained. The specific question I have is, a- and this has to do on page two of the document in in the packet, it says that this portion of Summit Pass Road is proposed to be private. The current access to the Brim Trail and other trails there is done very often off a parking area, which is just after the village ski lift. My question is, while the trail will be accessible, will the parking area still be maintained? And even though the road will be private, will the public be able to drive their park and access the trail? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Is there anyone else online? As there's no one in the chamber, does anyone else online have a question? Or a comment about this item? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the period for public comment. And we will go back to discussion with the applicant and our, our staff representative.
Maybe we'd like to address or have the applicant address us about commenting on public access and parking for the existing trail and if that will be changed or how that will work down the road, please.
Brooke Hance, again, for the record, um, so although that particular issue isn't part, if we reference those two um, inconsequential differences um, of this particular plat, um, that area Brim Trail is near um, where we will be doing construction to build this future um, access in the subdivision of Shelter Hill. And so um, I can envision that there may be temporary closures in the future of or um, relocations of trail and parking in order to accommodate uh, safety um, of people so that um, there's no impact of the construction to the trail. Um, but we're looking really closely at where that will be and we intend to make that available. Um, because it's important for us to um, to keep that public access uh, in place. And so it may have to be modified in terms of location. Um, and then over time, what we do want to do is um, look to add to the public trail system and also um, enhance how they uh, the public can access trails. And so that will be an ongoing conversation with you. Um, and um, will need to be, I think, documented uh, differently than how, you know, I have to reference back to our old plan, which um, doesn't have even any of the um, multitude of trails that we currently have on site. So it would be better for us to have that updated, show you where we are providing access and then show how we can further enhance that.
I appreciate your comments and realize that's not part of what we're discussing tonight, but it was public address and it's a very popular trail. And it sounds like the parking and trail access will be accommodated down the road. There may be some temporary closures. However, in the long run, that will remain public access with additional trails possibly.
Correct. And and the public access, I'll I'll rephrase that, it it likely will need to move in that area in terms of that parking and um, where that trail head starts, just because if you look back to that blob of the bubble, the yellow, that actually was where development would occur. So the trail will have to move to accommodate that. Um, and but there's no intention of completely ob- obliterating it, so.
Understood. Thank you for your comments.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Bar- Commissioner Barbara, have you had a chance to speak?
Yes, I have. I'm all set.
Thank you. If there's no further comment or question, I am happy to entertain a motion on this item 3.5 UV SO 8224.
I'd like to make a motion with the caveat that uh, we can approve this preliminary, but they've really got to look at the density, maybe increase the square footage of these single units. So I guess that's a no. From you.
Well, I'm trying to understand the pro- your, the proposal, if I'm understanding you, your proposed motion is to approve with with the stipulation that they change what's proposed.
That's correct.
Okay, do we have a second? Would anyone else like to make a motion? Oh, sorry, yes, we'd love to hear from you.
I, Brooke Hance, I should have addressed this earlier and I thank you, Commissioner Morby, for that comment. Um, Tammy, I don't know if you can bring up a specific page of the plat, if you have any in your presentation. Um, because I really actually also appreciated Commissioner Fur's earlier comment regarding the um, coming to the Board of Adjustment. And we uh, we don't want to see that happen if possible. Um, and I know that state laws are constantly in flux regarding this. But one of the things that we're attempting to do with these lots, which are our biggest lots so far, um, uh, are to also put into place into our design guidelines limitations on the ability for people to make those requests. And so although the state um, may still authorize um, a Board of Adjustment um, or a planning commission to consider um, changes to lots, they would still have to go through the HOA. Um, and ultimately, if we say no, even if you say yes, it's a no. Or I mean, the the lot, um, the building envelope, for example, if somebody wants to get it closer to someone else's or enlarge it and the HOA deems that inappropriate, um, then even again, if um, planning or adjustment says yes, it it doesn't happen. So um, on the screen, it's still pretty small. I don't know if you guys can see that. Um, yep, there you go. So you're, you're, I think our smallest, smallest lots um, are in the one um, are just under a half acre range or right around half acre and there are seven of those. And then the remainder uh, are all larger than that, um, including the the um, the lots that are all the way to the south end, which as you can see, the temp, thanks, she's trying to get you different images so that there it's very clear um, of um, significantly over an acre. And so you've got the, you know, the point five, three, six, for example, just over a half an acre. Um, and within those, what's not shown on these, that there will be building envelopes um, that don't have to be platted because um, Ricky Eversen here with me tonight uh, was one of the people on our team that said, hey, in the past, we've had a couple of people who've had building envelopes per the plat and then that that makes it a county issue, right? Where if we, they want to amend that envelope. So instead, we're going to put those building envelopes on to the HOA's responsibility. Um, and they still will have probably more challenging time moving those around. But at the same time, it isn't a constant impact um, to you to have to have the the time um, taken away um, that you probably would like to spend on other items. So again, these are bigger lots and we're um, making sure the design guidelines address um, these concerns that you have.
The one thing that, again, we would see in the Board of Adjustment is the topography issue and none of that's here. Is this relatively flat?
This also is our flattest subdivision by far. Are you um, on a whole as you're um, starting uh, where the road begins on the left-hand side and upper portion of the page. Um, you're originating from where the, the village um, kind of ends right now. And um, so if you've been to the Brim Trail, you know that it's relatively flat there and it remains on the um, flat lower ridge um, with the lots coming off on either side to take advantage of where the road is, is extremely flat. And the lot, the topography is just slightly dropping off. And so um, unlike lots of the other um, mountainous terrain that we have, this is uh, it's it's almost, you know, it's very, very easy to develop. It's almost too flat compared to the rest um, of the topography we have. But we are taking into account, making sure that there are setbacks for not only views, but um, infrastructure, utilities, uh, snow storage, things that are important that people then tend to come back and and say that that's um, that's something that they want to enhance.
Thank you.
So with a building envelope, all construction has to be within that envelope?
Correct.
Um, who do, excuse me, who determines the size of the envelope?
That will be, it's as part of the HOA's design guidelines. So the standards for the subdivision are in that uh, book and that will limit the the size.
Okay, and will these?
Okay, and will these be shown on the final plat?
We weren't planning on doing that, so be cut, and so this is the push-pull. I've always been a proponent of that, because then it gives you all the assurance that that's where the house and the improvements have to stay within. However, as Commissioner Frower pointed out, if we do that, anytime a person wants a minor amendment, even inches, they have to come back and amend the plat on their lot for that building envelope. So we've thought, okay, a nice way to do that is for us to have the, the requirement is part of the design guidelines, so when you buy a property, you know you can only build X number of square feet of a house within this building envelope. And then if they want to apply, the owner wants to apply to change that, they would have to apply to the HOA to amend the design guidelines instead of coming and having a Board of Adjustment or a Planning Commission amendment request.
Okay, so when a buyer goes to buy a lot, will he see something visually or stake that on the lot? How does he know?
They can, they can hire a surveyor to go stake that building envelope. They will get, as part of the design guidelines, each lot has a lot notebook or a site notebook that shows the lot lines and then the building envelope pictorially represented, so they can see, and then it also will state the maximum square footage of that area. So if that's something that you would like to see, you can make that a condition, and then by the time we get to final, we would add that in as a requirement, we would put that back in.
I can see the argument for simple to change things around.
Right. Well, I would say the HOA is not simple.
More simple. But I'm just wondering, there is a I I can't remember what it's called. Land Sales Disclosure Act or something like that, it says when you go purchase this, you've got to know what you're purchasing and what restrictions will be there. And some
It's disclosed.
I don't remember if those are shown on the deed or subject to, anyway, just to avoid problems in the future, coming back to the Board of Adjustment. I didn't know, I couldn't build here. Will they receive something graphically showing where they can build before they put down their money?
Correct, so they would receive their page of the design guidelines that has that indicated, because otherwise, then it's not, it's not applicable to their property, so it has to be not only does the plat have to be recorded, but then the design guidelines have to be in effect impacting that lot.
So the the building envelope will not be shown on the final plat? But the buyer has to sign that he received disclosure of where it is?
Correct.
Okay.
But I think what you're saying is if we say we want to see the building envelope in the final, you'll put it in for us.
Whichever you prefer, I like both ways, it's, there's a good argument for both versions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'm happy to call for a motion.
So Chair, I would move to approve 3.5 UV S zero eight two 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 four. The request for the preliminary approval of the Shelter Hill subdivision, which is a thirty-nine lot subdivision located in the DRR one zone with the condition that before it comes back for final approval, the building lot envelope for each lot be included in the plat, if that's the appropriate piece of paper that we need to see.
Anything about the findings?
Based on the findings presented by staff and the applicant.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I would second that, as long as we clarify areas D and F on the proposal. Including.
You have to ask for friendly amendment, yes.
Oh.
Only because it's not already written in the packet.
It's written.
I'm, I'm fine with that amendment, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, I second on that.
Okay.
Basis.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve, there is a second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? And if not, I'm calling for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? It is unanimous vote for approval. Congratulations. Tammy, are you just collecting your things?
Just collecting my things unless I don't have anything else to say, so.
Just wanted to make sure, all right, so in this, in, at this point, we have on the agenda, item four, public comment for items not on the agenda, is there anyone in the audience online that would like to make a comment on an item that was not on tonight's agenda? Not seeing any hands. If not, then I'm going to move on to remarks from planning commissioners, anybody have anything they would like to remark?
Think in the future, it would be helpful in a situation like this where we could see side by side what it is now, where it's going, even if it's broken down into small sections.
Agreed, and it might be complicated, but on the, in the packets, this, I'm going to add that layer of complexity, if we're able to put it on the same page on the packet so that we're able to look at it right next to each other or above and below rather than from flipping pages, but in terms of the online presentation during the meetings, I think a split screen would be very helpful for us and the audience, I agree. Anywhere, we have a a stand-in for our planning directors, there are planning director report.
Nothing from me, any questions for me? Okay, I'm done.
Right, any remarks from legal counsel?
No.
Then I.
Chair, I would move to adjourn.
Jake, we're all in agreement, yes, aye, second.
Aye.
Good night.